Ahead of myself in terms of your superintendent's report, but I can hold off on that question if that's appropriate.
No, that's okay. I think it's fine now. We have been asked by the board to form this 12-member committee that we're going to start looking at next week to go through those specific instances so that we're not there yet. So that would be data that would probably, that will be presented probably within the next, actually at the next work session. We want to have it ready to go. Where the cuts would be and then also where we believe the adds would be too. So that is coming.
Okay. Well, I would like to make one clarification because just on semantics, you said you were asked by the board to put that. Actually, I think you proposed it. We couldn't ask you because it was a work session and that would be an amount to taking action. So it was an offer by you.
I stand corrected. You're all right. I offered to form the committee. That's correct.
Any more discussion?
How many teachers are there in the school? At present time, it says we would cut 36 positions. If it doesn't pass, what percentage of all faculty positions do you know what that would be?
There's about 281, 290 teachers, so 15% or so.
And I think we actually, we were a little more conservative. We said 25 to 30 teachers would be cut. Just, we didn't want to give a large, too large of an estimate.
Is that full-time equivalency?
Was it 291?
How many are there?
Two ninety-one.
Faculty, teachers?
Teachers.
There's 21 FTEs, but none of them are full-time. So teacher headcount is probably more like 20.
Right. No, but I mean the comparison for this number is 291.
That's right.
So that would mean close to 10%. More than 10% would be reduced.
10 to 15.
Yeah, and assuming that they're all teachers, that would be the assumption.
What about support staff, like social workers, for example? Those are not a teacher.
The...
Are they considered a teacher?
They're on the teacher contract. Yes. Yep. Yep.
So you're counting them too?
They could be. You know, that whole, yeah, that's what we're using as our comparison. So we're just really including anybody who falls on a teacher contract. I think we use, what, dollar amount, Colleen? About 40,000. 47,000. So whoever gets paid 47,000, we're using as that 25 to 30 reductions. If you're using administrator, then just double the number. So... Yep.
Then if the levy doesn't pass in the, whatever number of teachers and they say, then we don't cut them. That's, could be a problem for us, right? We don't cut them?
You're looking at 1.7 million dollars in deficit.
When we get down to it with all the groups coming up and say, "Don't cut me."
Yep. The board has to cut. 1.7 million dollars is what we've said. Colleen and I can only tell you what you need to do. We can't vote yes or no.
And what would the impact on the budget be if we get 100 more students than we projected when we built the budget?
Each student generates about $5,200 in general education aid. There are other aids that come along with it, but, so 500, half a million.
By the same token, if we lose students, we lose aid.
Yes, I should have asked it both ways. Lesser money.
Any further questions, comments?
Todd, I'm looking at, I mean this, uh, attachment C on the salaries. You've got 10 schools in here, Fairville being among them, including Elverly, North St. Paul, St. Cloud, Austin, Richfield, Robbinsdale, South St. Paul, Wilmer, Worthing. First of all, how did you select the schools?
We selected the three characteristics I wanted to get from this was similar special ed population, similar English language learner populations, and similar free and reduced lunch populations. So that was a criteria I had in my head to get all those three pieces of data, to get a good comparison for that.
And you have both rural and urban.
Yep.
How do you come for the fact that we have the lowest salaries?
Well, you probably want Tim to discuss that more than I do. We, you know, I, you know, it's a tough question for me to answer because I think we still want to be as competitive as we can for good quality staff. I think we have good quality staff. So I don't necessarily think that the pay reflects how good our staff is. I think we have a great group of teachers and professionals. I think that we have been, I've only been here a year now and going on my second year, but looking at the data historically, you've been pretty conservative when it comes to negotiations compared to the other districts, depending on what your definition of conservative is. And as a result, you've fallen a little bit behind in salaries and benefits based on these, this population.
And when I look at D, I see our benefits are kind of middle of the road. Their sum is high as $3,574 and we're at $2,160.
And the lowest is 1828.
And some are 1828.
But we're, I think we're missing an important distinction here. This is salaries per ADM. It doesn't mean that their total compensation is lower than their peer group at the other hospital, other hospital, other high school or school. It just means maybe they have a few more students that they're dealing with. So on a per capita basis, they might not be, but their total salary could very well be comparable or even higher. But this is on a per ADM, not looking at if they're making, you know, total salary.
So does class size have anything to do with that?
Yeah, they have a lot to do with it.
Meaning, we have larger class sizes or?
It's gotta be one or the other. I mean, I don't know how else you could, you could define it. I, I mean, it could be higher. Well, the special ed population would be similar because we did the analysis on that. So it'd have to boil down to higher class sizes or lower class sizes, if that's the other analysis that you look at. So if you, I mean, you can, you can analyze the data to death and make your own assumptions with it. But the bottom line is if you look at generally across, depending on whether you have more teachers or less teachers, we're a little bit low.
We're paying less per student in school for salaries than these other night schools and the studies we've seen.
Any further comments, questions?
Howard, thank you for what you just said. I'm rather involved this stuff around in my mind and there's been a lot of controversy about settlements and whatnot, but this data seems to indicate that we are not paying more. We're actually paying less than most of those districts per student to provide services.
Of similar...
Per student, right? You can't say anything about annual compensation.
No, I'm, but what I'm saying is that our community investment in our students is on the low side compared to these other districts that have similar populations, similar demographics.
Well, we settled for five and a half percent over two years. How's that coming out compared to other school districts?
Uh, now you're gonna put me on the spot. I didn't have that data with me. Do you have, Colleen, do you remember?
I think it's right.
It's low, state average, and don't quote me on it, but it's lower than state average right now. And the, I know it's the second lowest, I've been, I've had so many numbers go through my head in the last week, so I apologize. But I know it's the second lowest settlement since 1993 in Fairville. And so when I compared the like demographics with, and I did the apples-to-apples comparison with the demographic population, we were, I believe we were the lowest settlement on there. But don't, or at least lower than average, but don't quote me on that.
Yeah, I have the sense that in other conversations that what we settle for is in the ballpark with what other districts are settling for.
Oh, it is in the ballpark.
One last time, anything else? Okay, hearing done, we'll move forward to 8C, Budget Enrollment Reports. Colleen or does Todd?
Nope, I don't have this.
Okay, you've got a couple of enrollment reports here. And the first one, if you look at it, it's 2011, 2012. And what I did is I added the very right-hand column where it says ADM, which stands for Average Daily Membership, and that's how the state collects it. It's an average of the whole year. So I just wanted to show you what our preliminary MARS, we call it MARS data, it's the Automated Reporting System for Students, is showing. And at the very bottom of that, you can see the number 3,008, I didn't bring my glasses, 99.
Yep.
And if you compare that to the number way on the left, which on the third column, projected in February of 2012, we projected 3,850. So we're about 50 students ahead, which is good. It's a great position. I like to be right there. That's, that gives us a little bit of a cushion. So we'll come out ahead of what we projected, which will give us about another 250,000 over what's in the budget. And that's a small percentage when you look at the $40 million budget. So that's right where we want to be for 2011, '12. Any questions on that? We're still finalizing that data. It actually doesn't become final until January. It shouldn't change too much from now, though. Pretty much every category's been reported and there's just some small tweaking as they edit it throughout the state.
In our elementary school, what's the largest class size?
That I don't know.
What about kindergarten through grade one or two? Do we know that?
Yes, we do. I don't know that off the top of my head, but we have about four sections in every school. So all you're, all you're gonna get by looking at this data is averages because I put it all together.
I think moving grade six is probably our largest class size in the elementary, although we call it middle school. That's 300 students. And then it looks like we're projecting grade four to be about 298. Those numbers won't really start to gel until October, though.
And then when the class, when school starts, we can get an idea of what kind of our largest classes are in the early ages?
Yes, we will.
It takes about at least two weeks for things to shake out as kids are still coming and going. But the second enrollment report is just a snapshot of where we were in August. This is not very solid at this point because we still have a lot of kids that move throughout the summer. Some goes, some come, some go. And as kids that have left over the summer don't notify us, we don't really find that out until they don't show up in the fall. And then we have to wait to hear from them. And we can keep them for 15 days and then we drop them. But what I projected in June for student enrollment at the bottom, you can see, was 3,800 for our K through 12, plus the area learning center. And in August, we were at 3,760. So very close. I think we'll for sure hit that number by the time school starts. So the next good date to look at this is October 1st because then all the kids have shuffled and settled somewhere and then we take a good count and we actually report that to the state. So hopefully, we'll keep our kids.
Any other questions for Colleen?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the financial report. Anyone have any question? Oh, there is no report, sorry. Wrong page. Gifts and donations. Need to consider acceptance of gifts and donations. We have three for tonight. Near Strand PTO, $17,000 for playground equipment at Near Strand Charter School. The Fairville Booster Club Fitness Center Project, $36,792.12 to purchase equipment for this new center. Also, the Fairville Booster Club, $900 to pay for installation of new equipment at the fitness center. So the new equipment and installation.
Can I add one more, too, that we found out that Finance Committee had asked the board to approve the sewer and water fees? And the boosters have called and asked to pay for those fees for, instead of having the school pay for those fees. So another thank you to the Booster Club for coming up with about $7,000 to pay for the sewer and water hookup.
That was for one water phone.
Correct. Basically what it is, yes. So we have four, four items to approve.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions?
I have a question, Todd. The $7,000 to hook up sewer and water, that's specifically for the fitness center, which we already had lines going into the schools?
Yeah.
What are they doing?
Um, you know, this is Kevin's expertise, too, and I, you know, it's, they have, there's certain, there's ordinances that the city has to go by with square footage. And I think it's also a little gray when you displace one area and move it to another area. And I, I just don't know the details that deeply, I guess, with regard to that. So I, I did try to appeal it with the city and it did not go through.
To me, with my experience, it's not a gray area because you're taking one area.
What do you mean one area? What?
The old way.
The old area. And then you're bringing it up, which you really can't use it because it's not accessibility.
Right.
So basically, you're just, and like I said, one water phone, $7,000, really not adding students per square foot. Then we make a lot of money, but it's all.
I'm just collaborating with the city with what they're requesting, so.
Yeah.
We're just puzzled as to why we're being charged $7,000 to hook into sewer and water when we already have a community building.
Yep. And I can have Kevin give an ex...
It must be a logical explanation.
Yeah. And the boosters are gonna pick it up. So I can give you a logical, I can have Kevin just write a brief summary for the board and send it out to you.
That would be nice to do.
Yep, I will.
It's revenue gender for the city, basically. That, that's what it is.
All right.
And then explain it at the Finance Committee meeting, and we had quite a discussion about it. And in the end, we decided that we should go ahead and pay for, I think that there were some things from the past that maybe we had gotten behind with, so.
Obviously, we have no choice. We do have to pay. It was paid through the permit process. So the contractor already paid it, the fee. When you get, when you pick up the building permit, you have to pay for the, you know, permit fee, plan check fee, and the SAC and WAC charges already. So it's already been paid. There was a change order, right, or will come through?
Yeah, it was an expense that nobody anticipated, but...
Okay.
We thank the Booster Club for picking that up. Okay, I have a motion and a second to accept the gifts and donations. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Pass is 6-0.
Madam Chair, unrelated to the motion, but I just, do we know where the, where the progress is in the fitness center? And will there be any interference with the starting school in a couple of weeks? Any construction going on there that will impact the transportation and parking and what have you for the school, high school?
Yeah, the only thing I could think, they're finishing up with the roof now and they have the concrete poured on the inside. So they're moving right along with that whole piece. They're waiting for the concrete to cure. So we're hoping they'll be finished with the roof by the end of this week and then they can move their equipment out. The only part that might be a little bit, I guess, obstructive would be if people wanted to go from that east parking lot into the west parking lot, they'll have to go all around the other direction. And then also the loading dock might be temporarily, actually, the loading dock may be because of the pavement anyways. And that's not even a thing to do with the, with the fitness center. But, so we're hoping the pavement comes in at that time. But that, those would be the two inconveniences. But we should be fine.
Thank you.
Okay, next, 8D, Other Items. Approve Resolution 1220 relating to election of school board members and calling the school district general election. This is something we must do by law. Any questions, concerns? It does show a sample of the ballot on there for you guys to see. Okay?
It's quiet.
This is an action item?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Mr. Clerk, we need a roll call.
James Wolf?
Aye.
Chair Robisho?
Aye.
Richard Olson?
Aye.
Pat Davis?
Aye.
Tom Gasper?
Aye.
I vote aye. Chair Lee, that's 6-0.
Thank you. Okay, moving along, Other Committee Reports. Insurance Committee, there's no report. Wellness Committee, no report. Community Education Report. Thank you, Ann Marie.
Sure. Thank you. There's been lots of things that have happened since I started several weeks ago, but the two things I want to highlight was the back-to-school newsletter. Hopefully, you all received one in your mailboxes. It was a saturation mailer, making sure that everyone in the school district received this. We felt that it was important to get the information out, even though it's directly related to students in the district. We wanted to make sure if there's grandparents or other people interested in knowing the information that they have at their fingertips. The other thing that's coming out in September is our Community Education Catalog. That will offer lots of the ideas we were talking about earlier in terms of the enrichment programs and also really highlighting our core programs such as Adult Basic Education, Early Childhood, 21st Century, all of the programs that we have going on. So those are just my brief updates.
Any questions? Did everyone receive their newsletter?
Yes, I did.
It was very nice, very well done. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, moving on, Other Matters, Superintendent's Evaluation.
I have not received all of the evaluations yet, so that will have to be deter, delayed until I receive.
Okay, we will shoot for the next meeting. Other Items of Information, Student Representative, we do not have right now. Hopefully, after the first month, you'll get people back in.
Yep.
School Board Members. Anyone with any information they would like to share? Okay.
Well, I, this, I hope this is the appropriate moment for this. I'm looking forward to the Curriculum Committee meeting on September 17th. I would like to propose that at our work session on the 10th, that we have a, some board discussion of providing direction and purpose to that curriculum committee so that we can get off to a great start this year and know what the board in general, not just the board representative, might have in, in mind in terms of the information or ideas that they're looking, kinds of reports they may be looking for from the curriculum committee. So I propose that we just have that as a discussion item at our next work se, work session.
That shouldn't be a problem, should it?
Nope. No, I think that's a great idea.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, also, I talked to Mr. Sisker already about the new system of grading from No Child Left Behind to the state system. What does that mean in those scores that came out, especially at the middle school of 13? What does that mean to, you know, to all of us? Is it exactly, you know, is it good or bad or what, what is it?
Yep. And we have that on the work session, too. Already have that on it. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. Okay, anyone else? Superintendent's Report.
It's been a busy few weeks. We have had, we've been negotiating with our support staff, the EAs, the PARAs. Remember, those are two separate groups, similar job duties, but they're two separate unions. And then also the custodians and secretaries. Negotiations have, I think, have gone very well. Nicole and Colleen have done a great job of setting the parameters up and, and moving forward with negotiations with these groups. So, and likewise, the, the unions have been very understanding and cooperative with us, too. So I think it's gone very well. The, I've also met with all the board candidates and very impressed with all the board candidates. Very, it was very nice to meet every one of them and to learn a little bit more about each of those board candidates. So thank you all for, for coming. And let me give you a, a little bit of a, I guess, a synopsis of what being a school board member entails. And workshop begins next week and I believe 7:30, the coffee and, do we have cookies? All right. What are they called?
Light, light muffins.
Muffins, okay. You can have some, yeah, healthy muffins before the, before the meeting. Yeah, a little continental breakfast. Yeah, but the actual, the actual workshop will start at 8 o'clock on Monday and you're all certainly invited to attend. If you get a chance to, Wednesday is Patrick Briggs. If you get a chance to attend, we'd love to have you come there if you, if you have some time during the day. I don't have that, that time in front of me. Maybe, can I peek at this, James, real quick? He starts at 8 o'clock on Wednesday and he's a very dynamic speaker and he does a, a great job. I listened to him when I was in Orlando at our Avid Conference, so I would encourage you to go that, too.
How were we looking at you?
Well, actually Cheryl and I sat down and last spring, we were thinking about what we needed to present because we're pushing this Avid piece forward. And we said, well, why don't we try Patrick Briggs? He's a national speaker and he just luckily happened to be free that day. And we happen to have a nice line item budget for that in our, our integration grant. So the timing, timing was perfect, so.
So we're able to use that integration?
Yeah. Yep. And we're inviting Waterville Legion Morris Town as well, and we'll have some staff members for that, too, from there. And actually, Mankato is using, the schools at Mankato have also now pared from us and asked to use him. And so now they're gonna be using him as well. So he's gonna be in Mankato this week, that week as well.
So what, he's gonna speak at 8 o'clock?
Yeah, 8 to 10.
And then will there be any discussion or anything?
Yeah, there'll be follow-up. And I believe they have him with the middle school. I can't, I don't, is it the middle school? It's in there. But they do have, he'll be around all day long for the staff.
Oh, good.
Yep. And probably the ninth grade is where we're also from there. That's all.
Okay, Dates to Remember. August 25th, we have a sheet in front of you about the International Festival going on in Central Park and the band show, Neighbor Meeting Neighbor. Kathy does have some times if anyone is interested in helping out man our booth. You have what, two or three left?
I have four.
Four.
So if you guys would like to help out and talk to Kathy, it's this Saturday. But there's no time on there. Starts in the morning, doesn't probably, I don't remember.
It's 10 a.m. to 4 p.m.
Thank you.
If it runs.
Okay. August 27th is the all-district back-to-school workshop at the high school. In front of you also, there's a little brochure that tells what's going on August 27th through Friday, the 31st. And there's staff awards and recognitions on the back, so we want to make sure all those people get... Everyone recognizes them, sorry. August 28th, from 9 to 1, is the District Employee Blood Drive at the middle school, which we were invited to. Talks about that in the brochure also. September 3rd is Labor Day, no school yet, last day off. September 4th, first day of school, bright and early. September 10th, at 7:30 a.m. is the finance meeting at the district office. September 10th, at, I'm sorry, at 5:30 is our work session at the district office. September 11th will be the policy meeting at 5 p.m., not 6, at the district office. September 17th, at 6:30, is our regular board meeting back here. Anything else anyone has on there?
The first D school, the, your adopted school, do you want us at the schools to greet or not really?
If you want to go to your respective schools, do you remember that sheet that you had? I think it'd be great for the parents to see you walk in.
Yeah, I do not have it in front of me, but...
Do you want us to email it to you?
That would be perfect. People can show up that first day of school. We've done that in the past.
Yep. Love to have you. Greet the parents and the kids as they come to school. It's good PR.
Could you let us know what time we should show up, you know, to?
You bet.
Okay, anything else from anybody? Hearing none. I have a motion for adjournment.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Passes six zero for adjournment.